Everybody ready? Let's go. Good evening. We are going to reconvene. The board was previously in executive session, took a brief recess, and now we are convening in open session again. First item on the agenda would be item four, approve the bills, the payrolls, and the warrants.
So moved.
Second? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. Item five would be to approve the minutes of June 12th, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no for the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so voted. Announcements. Selectman Miller, you had an announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just take a moment during announcements here to update the board about an initiative that is, has been undertaken to form the Shrewsbury Town Center Association. This initiative was the idea of Mary Beth Lynch, who is the owner of Thrive Realty. Her new business is located in the center of town. And she had this idea and then took the lead to sort of spearhead some meetings with individuals, business owners, members of staff, others who might have been interested to come together to discuss what, you know, what an associate organization might look like and what the purpose would be. The purpose would be to, for the business owners to gather to improve in some capacity in the center of town, to make the center, establish it as a destination place similar to what was done with the Lakeway Business District on Route 9, to talk about various options and what they might do in sort of building a sense of community in the center of Shrewsbury. They've had three meetings to date. They've been well-attended at each meeting. Someone new has been in attendance. There seems to be some excitement, some enthusiasm about this. And so where the association is right now is actually organizing. They are putting together a mission statement. They will be putting together goals and objectives, kind of all that initial organizational information. So I just kind of wanted to let you all know what was going on. Once it's formally organized, I think it would be appropriate to bring Mary Beth and others maybe from the association to report to the board formally about their activities. I would also say that members of other town, the library, Ellen Dolan has represented, representative, someone from Melanie Petrucci from the Historic District Commission. So it's a well-rounded effort to, you know, again, to sort of meet and see what they might get going. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but again, just kind of intended to let you know what's going on there.
Great, thank you. Any other?
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing I dovetail on, and maybe Ms. Lass was going to touch on it, but sort of in keeping with the theme of the center, tomorrow evening, June 27th, at the library, 6:00 PM, there will be a workshop around parking in the town center. And people may know that the town received a grant to study parking in the center, and this workshop, I believe, is part of that initiative. So again, kind of dovetails, there's a lot sort of all of a sudden going on in the center of town, and I think it's pretty exciting.
Excellent. Any other announcements?
Chairman, on that note, Mo in Moira and Beth, you're to be credited for that great event that Rotary had over the weekend, right across from the opening of Thrive Real Estate. So I think that's an example of what can happen when there's real leadership from the business community in a downtown setting. Back to the Board of Selectmen work. My colleagues, I will be asking that the Beale Building Committee get an opportunity to come before you, probably on September 11th, to give you a more complete update. This summer will be very busy. We're meeting several times and, well, have met several times in June. We will meet several times in July and August as we work toward finalizing that project proposal. This evening, I would like the board's support in asking the manager to put together the specifics for that question regarding a new Beale school to be on the November 6th ballot with a special town meeting on Monday, 10/27, 20, excuse me, October 22nd, and that the board support the manager undertaking what necessary administrative work he needs to gear us up for that. We will have our traditional Beale meeting on the first Tuesday of July, and I will update the board following that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
One other thing I should note, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The town, and particularly Town Hall, was gifted the work of the Garden Club over the weekend at the, what I'm going to call, the Serenity Garden. I don't know that I'm right or not.
Sensory.
Sensory. Excuse me. Thank you. I knew I wasn't right.
That's all right.
It was a great event as a result of the really heavy lifting and just pure stick-to-itiveness of members of the Garden Club, and particularly Audrey Dally, is that how you say her name?
Yes.
Who for years has worked on this and found a location in town for which it made good sense. And it's a great add-on to that corner of the building, and people should stop by and enjoy it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Mr. Manager, you have anything to report to us this evening?
Just two brief items, Mr. Chairman. The, I'm happy to report that the town, through the leadership of David Snowden in the manager's office, has received a $40,000 recycling IQ kit grant where we will work out in the community to reduce contamination in our recycling stream and try to streamline those operations and inform and communicate with residents. So we will be working on that through some intensive weeks this coming fall and into the early winter. We'll be gearing up for that over the course of the next six or eight weeks. And then just a reminder to folks out there that the water rates will be changing on July 1st, and you'll start to see those, your bills, revised bills as you receive your first billing for fiscal year 2018. So within the coming months, we've posted those notices both in Bill Stuffers and the town website and at various locations, so.
Thank you. Did you mention what the funding source for that grant was?
It's from the Mastie P.
Excellent. Okay, very good. We appreciate that. Okay, we will, it is now past 7:05. We can have our meeting. We have representatives, commissioners from the Housing Authority with us. Gail Vigent, Treasurer, Paul Campanello, member, would you like to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
Always delighted to see the Housing Authority this time of year.
I'm sure.
Well, what, you're here this evening to talk about the pilot check for fiscal 18?
Yes. So Chairman LeBeau, Ms. Miller, Ms. Cassavant, Mr. Kane, Mr. DiPaolo, other members of the board, Town Manager, my name is Paul Campanello, and I'm the chairman of the Shrewsbury Housing Authority. I'm here tonight, as the chair just said, with our treasurer, Gail Vigent, to present the town with our annual pilot check. However, I thought before I did that, it might be a good time to let you and the folks watching know what kind of Shrewsbury Housing Authority has been up to for the town, what we do, and what we've done up to for the last few years. I think the last time I did this was a few years ago. So with your indulgence, Mr. Chair, I'll just give you a quick update on some of the more current projects.
Absolutely. Please do.
As I'm sure this board is where Shrewsbury Housing Authority doesn't take any funds from this town. We are funded entirely by the federal government, the Commonwealth, and our residents. Beyond this, we actually provide multiple services to the town in addition to the previously mentioned pilot payment. I thought it might be a good time to just give you a few highlights over the past, as I said, year or two. Ridgeland Road project is one that comes to mind, as I believe most of you on this board are aware. Roughly two years ago, we completed construction on the first ever Housing Authority project in town in over 20 years. We were awarded a grant in conjunction with multiple state departments, including mental health, to build three houses with five units on Ridgeland Road. And there are three two-bedroom, one, three two-bedroom units, three one-bedroom units, and one is just handicap accessible. So all of those have been at full occupancy since, you know, essentially the day the lights went on there. So that's kind of one ongoing project that's been great and has now kind of come to fruition. The Council on Aging Van Subsidy, again, I'm sure most of this board is aware, but Shrewsbury Housing Authority provides funds to operate that van for the seniors in town for many years, and my numbers may be off by a slight order of magnitude, but I think they're fairly accurate. Shrewsbury funded the van at about $10,000 a year. I think our residents were facing a fair increase a few years back, and we increased our funding to $15,000 a year to offset that. It's our opinion that this partnership's very successful for the town. I know there's another contract under review now, and I know there's possibly a grant that backfills that that we even get, but that's something that we've been very pleased with the operation of. I think, again, this is a development from maybe a year or so ago, the Shrewsbury Housing Authority completely re-overhauled its website. That was a project that was very near and dear to me, and we've now had a very professional website up and running for a couple of years. The URL, for anyone interested, is www.shrewsburyhousingauthority.org, or a shorter version, www.shrewsburyha.org. They both take you to the same place. This site, I am so pleased to present, has been an extremely effective tool for keeping our community informed about our program, our waitlists. We have an interface right into the statewide waitlist system. So once someone gets their number, what just as few as a few years ago meant driving to South Quinsig or making a phone call to see what the status was and where things have had, now it's all self-service, like so many other portals that we're all familiar with, except, you know, government traditionally lacking. So it's been such a good experiment and so well-received, many of the other local housing authorities have been tapping our resources, our vendors, and our expertise to try and launch sites similar to it. So it's, you know, some of the simple things we take for granted, but it's been really just an out-of-the-park home run for us. And it's a good way to communicate and post, to be in touch with our members, which, you know, probably, if we're being honest, wasn't our strongest suit prior to this. Occupancy, probably something you're interested in. We've consistently maintained near 100% occupancy, and while with predominantly Shrewsbury residents, as you may be aware, we maintain a waitlist through the state, which ties back to the website that I was talking about. But we always ensure the concept of local preferences applied to that list, and by "we" I mean Gail, myself, and the other three commissioners. And by that, I mean when there's an opening, residents of Shrewsbury or individuals working in Shrewsbury are placed ahead of other applicants. That's always been our charter. That's always been the way we've done it, and our composition is such that I think we've, it's a high percentage, 70, 80% are Shrewsbury residents, which is what we feel we should be chattering. The population is a high percentage. Our program is full. Our waitlist is long, and we turn around units very quickly by any Housing Authority standard. Additionally, people may be wondering, we also give preference to military and veterans and their family, but those are all tied to kind of the algorithm in the state. However, it is worth noting that literally in the last week, DHCD, which is our state-mandated body, not the Fed, so if you know the units, that's Francis and Elizabeth, has officially started the process of a new centralized statewide list. So let's all stay tuned. When I wrote this draft, that wasn't the case. So let's see the implications of this. If you recall, this was a result of the Patrick's administration's initiative to consolidate three, four years ago, whatever it was, when there was some, I'll say corruption in one of the Housing Authority units, and you wanted to bring it together. That may hamper our ability to give Shrewsbury preference. I don't want to speak too soon, but we're losing some control as it goes statewide, and as I said, that literally got announced last week. In case anyone is curious, because I remember, Mr. Chair, you asked me this question last time I presented, and I wasn't going to not have it this time. Our overall number of units is 272, plus we manage 173 vouchers, and I have that breakdown by federal-state, in case anybody's curious. One of the more high-profile decisions and policies we've implemented literally in the last, less than the last calendar year, has been a new nonsmoking policy. While we were not the first housing authority to do this, we were certainly in the top 10% statewide. I think there were a couple dozen housing authorities had done it, and we felt strongly that we wanted to move forward. It was certainly a controversial decision that our board made with probably close to a year's worth of research and discussions with our tenants. We rolled it out on a rolling area with deadlines and satiation programs over the course of last summer. While it has certainly had a few dissenters, and I'd be misrepresenting if I spoke otherwise, we're very pleased to say that the vast majority of our residents, and I would say probably north of 90%, you can probably count the dissenters on, you know, a couple of hands, you know, maybe a dozen or so people have not been in favor of it, and they have every right to feel that way. But the vast majority of the other 250-odd are thrilled with the policy, thrilled with the way we've rolled it out. We've created smoking areas, in some cases, a couple hundred feet away from the buildings, and we're trying to accommodate our residents. A couple of final notes, we've had some significant capital improvements over the last couple of years, based on a variety, again, of federal and state funding initiatives totaling anywhere from 250,000 to 300,000 annually. The Authority has set a series of aggressive, five-year rolling capital improvements in place, and these plans include work to be done at all of our developments. Just to give you a few examples, and I won't bore you with petty stuff, but some of, again, the more high-profile stuff that maybe you guys wouldn't be aware of is, all over the last year or two, we've put a new roof on Elizabeth Gardens. We've put a new roof on our family units at Lake Street. We've put new boilers in both the Towers and Elizabeth Gardens, and those are not insignificant undertakings. We repaved the Shrewsbury Tower parking lot, or we're underway on the contracts with that. We've replaced all of the hallway and common area lights at the tower with new LED efficient lighting. We've done improvements to a new solarium at the tower, new exhaust fans on the tower, done new energy-efficient insulation at Francis Gardens. So a lot of this stuff people wouldn't see, even our own residents wouldn't see unless they happened to be there that day the work's being done, but I thought it might be nice for you guys just to, we don't do this very often. In summary, I'd just like to say in the not-toorecent past, as I mentioned earlier, some of the local housing authorities came under fire for fiscal responsibility. I'd like to let this board know that, in my humble opinion, nothing could be further from the truth here in Shrewsbury. We're fiscally strong, we have great reserves, our fee accountants say our balance sheets and our incomes have never been stronger. It's well-managed. As I said, our financial position's very strong, our future's positive and bright. And while lots of all the housing authorities in this Commonwealth are either struggling to keep their doors open or having difficulty turning over units, Shrewsbury Housing Authority is growing, as referenced by my Ridgeland Road. So very few authorities are adding units. Over the last few years, we've added them, and we're happy to provide safe, affordable housing to the residents in Shrewsbury. I'm happy to take questions, or in the absence of any questions, I'm happy to turn it over to Gail. So that's up to you guys.
Questions from members of the board?
I just had one.
Fucking Caspian.
Thank you. So when you mentioned the new initiative that came out of the state to change the way the waitlist works, that it might not give preference to Shrewsbury residents first, you mentioned Francis and Elizabeth, but you didn't mention the Tower.
Fed.
Is it also the Tower?
No.
Why not?
Fed.
Ah.
Tower is a, State is DCHD, DCHD, Tower is HUD. The Tower is a federally funded building. The Elizabeth, Francis, Lake Street, and a variety of family units are state-funded. So while we don't have that rolled out yet, I would be, what I just said was an opinion. Let me clarify that. I would be shocked if the state were able to manipulate the federal building, but it may, but we haven't seen that yet. But we have, we run two full sets of books, two full sets of operating policies for state and for federal, and they can cohabitate, and they have separate accounts, separate banks, all that kind of stuff. For example, I think a lot of people know that this particular authority has been fairly entrepreneurial in our ability to rent out roof space to carriers in the Tower. By law, we can't use that money for any state improvements. We can only use that for tower improvements. So we're very, goes back to the fiscal responsibility. But the actual answer to your question is, we'll wait and see, but my suspicion is it'll be state-driven, not fed.
Actually, thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay. Well, I'm a relative newcomer to the Housing Authority, and I think one of the things that has stood out the most for me is how fiscally responsible the people that serve on this commission really are, and are, knowing that our primary goal is to be sure that we provide safe, decent, and affordable housing to those under the aegis of the Shrewsbury Housing Authority. We get our monies, as Paul said, from the state and federal government and from the rental income from our residents. And because the Authority is so well-managed, and because I believe we've made really wise fiscal decisions, we are in good, in good shape as an authority. And as treasurer of the Authority, I'm here tonight to present our annual payment in lieu of taxes, and the amount this year being $41,482.53.
Dear Margato, always love this night, just so you know.
Kevin's smiling.
So I took a quick look at your report in the annual report, and did some very fast math. It's well over a half a million dollars in accumulated pilot payments to the town, so certainly the town appreciates that very much. But we also want to recognize you for the great work that you do. To make it clear to the community, you are not funded through the local property taxes. You're funded separately, so this isn't our money coming back.
This isn't, right. It's exactly what the name says. It's a, you know, payment in lieu of taxes. And to be clear for this board, in case everyone, I mean, I didn't learn this right out of the gate when I first joined the Authority, whatever, over 10 years ago. That's just not a number. We don't look at the bottom and say, oh, what can we cut the town? 20 grand this year, it was a good year, maybe 30. There's a very, very specific algorithmic formula derived from the state and from DCHD and HUD, based on the number of units, the number of family units, the number of two-bedroom, number of one-bedroom, where most, we're not unique, and that most housing authorities don't take money from the town, and the way that this check is derived is based on occupancy and percentages and so forth and so on. So that number should be consistent, but it should be growing based on inflation and all of that. But yes, I think you're right. It's got to be north of a half million over, you know, if it's that, over 20 years, so for sure.
So as I mentioned, we're very grateful for the payment, but we do want to recognize you for the fine work that the Authority's done for many, many years. I think the board would agree with the statements that you've made. We hear much more from people who are delighted to live in Housing Authority housing. You can't make everyone happy all the time.
Of course.
But I think you do a great job, and I think the board feels exactly the same way.
Absolutely.
So we thank you again, and anything else from members of the board?
Good report. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you.
Commissioner.
We will now move on to item nine, a presentation from Town Engineer Holland and Town Council Madouse regarding the intermunicipal agreement with the City of Worcester for wastewater conveyance, and we will review and possibly act to authorize the town manager to sign the intermunicipal agreement for the conveyance of wastewater. Gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Stephen Madouse, Town Council. Before you this evening is the proposed intermunicipal agreement for the conveyance of wastewater, which was the result of negotiations with the City of Worcester, and I can quickly kind of walk the board through the agreement. It's not very lengthy, but the whereas clause is, you know, Worcester is a member of the Upper Blackstone Water Pollution Abatement District. The town is not. The town is a contract to, with the Upper Blackstone, so we're not a member yet, but we send effluent. And that's important because we're not paying Worcester for treatment, we're paying the treatment plant for treatment. And that will be discussed later in the agreement. There's an existing intermunicipal agreement between the town and the City of Worcester from 2002. This would replace that, and of course, it's replacing it because of the opportunity presented by Worcester constructing the new sewer main down Route 20, which this agreement would facilitate the connection by Shrewsbury to serve much greater service areas than currently existing that go to Worcester. So this is an intermunicipal agreement under Chapter 40, Section 4A, between two communities of the general laws, and also under the statute on sewer provisions. So turning to the next page, the connections, there's two existing connections, Goddard and Eck Court. Those are very small, and those are not metered connections, but those are existing under that 2002 agreement. The new connections would be the water treatment plant, and I know the town engineer could speak to that better than I could about what kind of the filtration and things that presents flow into the sewer line from that treatment plant. So that would be metered flow, that's a new connection. Then, of course, the Route 20 connection is the big connection. And the service areas are shown in the exhibits to the agreement, Exhibit A being the existing areas, and C being the large Route 20 service area. So moving on, this contemplates that we would either most likely amend the agreement with the Upper Blackstone that the town has to allow for the introduction of a much greater flow than we currently send to that plant. And if we need MIPA approval, because gallonage of sewage to be served could be a trigger, we'll have to, we haven't determined that yet, but the agreement contemplates that we might pursue that if necessary. Wastewater limitation allowed by this agreement will be 1.5 million gallons per day, which is significantly greater, of course, than our current limit under the 2002 agreement of approximately 20,000 gallons per day. So this is a much bigger venture than currently exists. Shrewsbury will bear the cost for the connections to tie in. Moving on to Section 7, where, as I mentioned, the water treatment plant connection and the Route 20 connection, those will be metered flows. and the Route 20 connection, those will be metered flows. So, Shrewsbury will be, uh, purchasing and installing those meters, um, and... the online reading of the metered flow for purposes of producing the billing. Section 8 is the transport fee, um, which is an exhibit not yet populated in the agreement. We were hoping to go to the table with, to Worcester with, um, getting some rate other than their out-of-town rate as defined in their, um, ordinances, but Worcester is adamant that the rate would be their existing out-of-town rate, which is really a user rate, and not a transport rate, so it's a rather expensive rate. I know we'll get into that later, uh, with, with Mr. Howland, but the, um, we made an effort to get a transport rate, a transport rate being merely paying for the cost to deliver effluent from point A to point B, and not as a user to the whole system. It was not received well by the other side, they insist that the only deals that they enter, and this is a contract negotiation, would be their out-of-town rate. So, the next paragraph is to limit rate increases to no greater percentage of increase in the in-city rate, so that if the town were to, uh, enter this agreement, the rate would be the out-of-town rate, and it only may be increased at the same percentage that the in-city rate would be increased by the Worcester City Council. So, you get some kind of political protection perhaps of, uh, rate increases on an annual Next sections are about determining the billing. For those small connections, it's estimated flow based on water consumption when there's no metered flow. And as I mentioned, the water treatment plant, the Route 20 connection, that would be the actual metered flow that gets, uh, generates the bill. For purposes of liability, um, the benefit of an intermunicipal agreement, of course, is where we both retain our protections under the Torque Claims Act and limitations on liability. So, any Shrewsbury employees, employees, um, acting under this agreement in Worcester are covered by Shrewsbury as if they're acting in our own town and vice versa. Dispute resolution, this is probably one of the more important parts of any intermunicipal agreement, and this, we retain the simple language that was in the 2002 agreement, rather than, um, any kind of cumbersome or detailed requirement for mediation or arbitration, which can sometimes be as expensive as litigation, but the expectation is that the parties would probably meet in an effort to resolve a dispute, uh, before going to court. But, um, that's, that's basically the same provision that was in the 2002 agreement, it seemed to work well. Previously, there weren't really any disputes, um, so maybe it wasn't tested. Term of the agreement would be 25 years, that's the max permitted under the statute. One other thing I think I'd like to correct on the, um, execution page, I think I want to have the sewer commissioners sign it rather than recommend it, sign it as approved with this board. That's basically the agreement in a nutshell, and, um, I can turn it over to Jeff on.
All right, so, when looking at whether or not the Route 20 quarter was a viable option, one of the things we've looked at is the sewer rate comparison between what we now are charged by the Westboro Treatment Plant and what would be charged if we do send our flow to Worcester, and then obviously treat it at the Upper Blackstone. Our current fee rate, and this is, uh, I think in 2018, fiscal 18 rate for the Westboro, is roughly $3.24 per thousand gallons. By going to City of Worcester and, um, Upper Blackstone, it's about two, two and a half times higher, just to have it treated at the Upper Blackstone. So, it's roughly $7.80 per thousand. And that is at a non-member rate. By adding a member rate, it's actually cheaper than that, it's about 50, 60 cents cheaper to be a member. However, the, currently, we do not have a buy-in fee or buy-in amount to the Upper Blackstone, they are still working on an audit, uh, to calculate what that buy-in rate would be. The buy-in rate is based upon, um, the residential, um, population within the district that you want to send the flows to. Our Phase 1 that we're looking at is roughly the, well, the area that flows to our Arrowwood Pump Station, so it's the Edgemere Orchard Meadow Estates, uh, Grafton Street Pump Station, no, not the Grafton Street, but the, the one that services Hickory and Crimson, uh, on Grafton Street. A couple of the smaller pump stations along Lake Street and South Quinsig flow to the Arrowwood Pump Station. Roughly, that amounts to an average of 180,000 gallons per day. That, that 180,000 gallons a day includes the estimated flow from the Market Basket or Edgemere Drive-In Facility. What we're, initially, it'd be around 120,000 gallons a day without the Market Basket, which is what the Arrowwood Pump Station is on average. With Phase 1, which again is basically re-divert, or diverting the flow from Arrowwood that now would flow, or we pump to Rolf Pump Station, then ultimately to the Westboro Treatment Plant, it's that pump station that we're looking to as part of the Route 20 Quarter in diverting that flow to the Upper Blackstone, I mean, yeah, to the Upper Blackstone through City of Worcester.
May I ask you a question, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly, sure.
Given the, uh, difference in cost, what are we benefiting from sending it west rather than east?
The benefit is, the city, or the Westboro Treatment Plant cannot be expanded through an agreement with the DEP, so there, we are limited, the amount of flow that we could send to the Upper, I mean, to the Westboro Treatment Plant. And then, with the opportunity to send flow and divert, change flow and send a portion of it to the Upper Blackstone allows us in the future for, uh, economic development, expansion, both along the Route 20 Quarter and potentially other locations.
So, one could argue we should have two sewer rates. If you're going west, you should pay X, if you're going east, you pay X minus.
I think that that is a discussion that the sewer commissioners will have, and with the town manager's office will have, determining whether or not that makes sense or not. At least initially, the, the flow that we would be sending to Worcester versus Westboro, the, the amount of flow to Worcester is only like 5% of, of the flow. So, i- in the overall grand scheme of things, it's not that big of a difference.
So, at this point...
Because it's such a low flow.
So, at this point, you, you anticipate only 5% going west?
Yeah, it, it's 180,000 gallons versus 3.0, almost 3 million, so it's even less than that.
Is there a limitation on that number going west?
So, the, the amount of flow, the maximum amount is 1.5 million gallons per day.
Okay.
Uh, and that was, and the reason we picked that number, that's assuming that we do Phase 2, which may be 10 years from now, maybe 20 years from now, may never happen. But that would be to take the flow basically from Centec Boulevard slash Cherry Street, and divert what's going there now, would probably intercept the Stony Hill Pump Station and send it westerly, and then pick up all those properties along there.
One final question, Mr. Chairman, I just, I just don't remember the earlier conversations we've had with the connection at the water pumping station. Could you refresh my memory on that?
So, the water treatment plant currently does discharge the Bodice, our Bodice Pump Station, which discharges to the City of Worcester. The agreement that was done in 2002, however, did not include the pump state or the treatment plant, it is in the service area that we sent flow to, to Worcester. So, we're just really bringing it, the whole service area that serves, that goes to the Bodice Pump Station into the agreement.
Okay, I took somehow the council's update that it was as a result of the new pumping station, we were connecting in that area.
Actually, going through the treatment plant and doing, doing this agreement, we looked at, we actually read the fine print in, in the, um, in the original agreement, and it was clear it was the Goddard Business Park, which is, which is what we call Bodice Drive, Metso's, the Phoenix Communications, et cetera. It did not include the treatment plant, even though the treatment plant was part of the Goddard, so there was a separate piece...
Yep.
...that the city sold to the town, or WBDC sold to the town back in the 70s or 80s.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Howland?
So, at this point, we're still waiting for the buy-in fee from the Upper Blackstone, and assuming we get a, a number, then now, obviously, I'd have to bring that back to the board to discuss that, which is the better option, to be a member or a non-member. At the current flows to the Upper Blackstone, it'd be my recommendation, depending on what the final number is, not to become a member, because the rate is so, our flow rate is so low. However, we do need to consider, is a seat, what is, what is the seat at the table worth? Because as a non-member, we don't have a seat at the table. With, as a member, we do become, have a seat at the table, and it's 50 cents more or less per thousand gallons. So, low flows, it's not worth, but as we get to higher flows, then maybe, it may make more sense to become a full member. However, when we start looking at the district, and if we do decide to buy in, I would do all Phase 1 and 2 as one, because in Phase 2 currently, there are no or very little residential properties and rates based on residents.
Very good questions, comments from members of the board? Selecting to follow.
So, so the buy-in fee would make us become a member of the Upper Blackstone?
Yes.
So, then, it probably doesn't make any difference, because they probably raised the rate, but if there's any work that needs to be done in the Upper Blackstone system or just the treatment plant?
So, with the Upper Blackstone, we'd just be at the treatment plant? Because each, the individual town has, has their own?
Okay.
So, they, the Upper Blackstone does not, um, maintain any of the systems outside the treatment plant itself?
Okay.
So, City of Worcester maintains their own, and unfortunately, as part of the rate to the City of Worcester, though, because we're transporting it through, there, that's part of that rate.
So, if we were a member, we would have a vote on any cap, but I would imagine it's set up as a percentage of flow or something of the overall?
That's correct.
So, we're gonna have like that much say?
Might have a little more than...
We're still gonna pay.
Right, that's correct.
If the Upper Blackstone decides they have to spend X number of dollars, and it necessitates raising the fee, um, then, then our, then our fee, um, the storage going there is gonna go up anyways, right?
Correct, and same thing, like, if Westboro has one, same thing, then, if they have one, their rates would go up also.
So, the biggest, the biggest advantage is, say, 50 cents a thousand, which could be substantial over time.
Over time, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
A couple.
Mr. Chairman, I seem to remember months ago, years ago now, when we first started this, there was always a warning from the then-manager, that if you connect in, be ready to deal with some land use issues, because it's possible, or it was at that time, probably a few years ago, that by, uh, having additional sewer capacity, you could inadvertently allow for some level of uncontrolled growth. Does the manager's office have an update on that?
Sure. So, myself, Mr. Howland, and the town planner reviewed this matter very intensively, uh, as we prepared for the May 2018 town meeting. And what was determined at that time, and Mr. Howland can, can fill in if I miss any details, was that the only areas that are still allowed to connect into sewer are in the needs area, as outlined in our comprehensive wastewater management plan. And at this time, the majority of the land is already zoned for commercial or industrial purposes in the needs area, not for residential purposes. So, we felt that at this time, that it was not, uh, it was not privy to change any zoning related to sewer connection.
We don't have to take any protective action, because it's actually, there happens to be a per-chance overlay of where we would want such development to occur for such a use.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. One other question, if I could, back to council. You mentioned the, uh, dispute resolution. Okay, so we, we get together and talk. If we, if we don't agree after that meeting, my hearing of that language would have me believe there's no prohibition against going to arbitration before going to court.
Correct, if it, if by mutual agreement.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, would someone care to make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the intermunicipal agreement for conveyance of wastewater?
Second.
You have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so voted. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate all the hard work that went into this. Board members, let's, uh, move into new business, item 10, review and act on the host community agreement with Prime Wellness Centers, Inc., 235 Hartford Turnpike for a retail marijuana dispensary. Board members, frequently, when these subjects come up, I ask for them to be, defer it to the end of the meeting, but though I see, uh, the applicant is with us this evening with a reasonable expectation that this is when the discussion was gonna happen, I'm going to recuse myself to avoid a, a potential conflict of interest and turn this matter over to Vice Chairman DePaul.
Okay, thank you. Board members, um, as you know, the, the town meeting, um, voted, um, by not yanning, recreational marijuana sales, retail sales, um, in effect allowed it, and we are, um, our town will allow up to two at this time retail establishments. That could change in the future, but right now, that's where it is. As you also know, medical, uh, facilities that had been approved by a certain date, are allowed to apply and to, um, get a sort of, get pushed to the head of the line in an application if they decide they want to have retail sales. Prime Wellness, um, in fact, met that criteria, um, and has come forward to, um, will seek a, an agreement with the town, uh, so they can move forward in their application, um, in the state for retail marijuana dis- uh, dispensary. And, uh, so we had, the, the manager, um, on our behalf, has worked to, um, does a draft agreement, um, a, a host community agreement, if I'm saying that right, um, and, um, we're here tonight to review that, and I'll ask the manager to take us through it.
Sure.
Thank you. So, I'll walk the board through, uh, the main provisions within the agreement. I will say that, uh, we've, um, had numerous conversations over, uh, the past two months since the vote at the special town meeting in, uh, late April, uh, between, um, myself and Mr. Glowick, and also on our side, uh, our counsel to the matter, Mr. Brian Falk, uh, who works with Town Council Madouse, uh, on issues particularly related to marijuana. I will point out that, uh, under the provisions of the general laws and the guidance of the Cannabis Control Commission, um, we have negotiated a 3% uh, uh, community impact fee, uh, with, uh, Mr. Glowick and Prime Wellness Centers, uh, which would be made on a quarterly basis to the town over the course of this five-year agreement, which shall begin, um, upon the, uh, opening of the operation of, uh, retail sales, uh, at this facility at 235, uh, Hartford Turnpike. Further, the, uh, company would continue to pay all other fees and, and service charges, charges that are due to the town, uh, just like any other, uh, business would. The, the company will also provide additional community, uh, support and, uh, look favorably upon local vendors and, and local employees, um, and provide such reports to the town at our request and, uh, in accordance with this agreement, um, and make available any and other, uh, documents that the town would need to, uh, verify, uh, compliance with local laws and/or, uh, the financial, uh, payments that are due through this, uh, facility. There's further, uh, confirmation, um, although our knowledge of the operations don't really require additional, um, information, but we have reaffirmed through this agreement various measures of security, um, and relationship between, uh, the operator and the Shrewsbury Police Department and other, uh, local first responders, uh, to make sure this facility runs well. So, those are really the highlights of the agreements, and, uh, you know, reflective and mirroring of the, uh, general laws where necessary. It has been, uh, reviewed and, and approved by council, as I stated earlier, and, uh, the impact fee negotiated is to the maximum extent allowable under, uh, the general laws.
Any questions, members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions, um, I, um, I'm comfortable with this agreement, but, but, um, as you were just saying, Mr. Manager, expand a bit, um, I do appreciate, um, the fact that the, um, community impact fee is at the full maximum 3%. 3%. As you know, it could have been up to 3% negotiated in there, and so, so I think it's a, a good community effort that, that it's, it's at the maximum. And again, I just wanted to note that I appreciate that.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just had something. I'm just in looking at, looking over the agreement, this is really my first time looking at a host community agreement, and I just noted that there's a provision in here for preferences to local hiring and using local vendors wherever possible. And I thought that that was something that stood out to me in addition to the security plan, seems to be like a high-level security plan, taken very seriously, and also that you are local and that for a first opening of a marijuana facility, I like that it's someone that is a local community member. I feel like you're gonna take this undertaking very seriously and the impact on the community very seriously, and that just makes me feel a lot better about moving forward with it.
Mr. Kane, do you have a couple of questions? We're in a somewhat unique situation here because we have, over the past several years, gained a degree of comfort with this operator. I think the previous board, all but one member, went to Connecticut and saw a place that was under his operation. We've gotten to know him in the community because as Beth said, he's involved. I do, I just have a couple of questions relative to item four, the local tax scenario. You know, you, you may recall that when UMass was looking for support for the building at the, the new building at the bottom of Main Street, we were very concerned that the building paid taxes so that although it was being built by a private entity that was subject to taxation, in the event UMass ever bought it, there was an agreement that they would pay a tax component. This gentleman is a registered corporation in Massachusetts, therefore he'll be paying taxes. However, times change, people change. So if he were to be acquired by a not-for-profit organization, I would like some protective language in here that the agreement enforced the payment of any property taxes in the event he acquired the building or any of the personal taxes that he would otherwise be subject to as it stands in this agreement. Because as ownership changes, that number could conceivably change dramatically. I do echo Moira's support and statement that I understand upon sitting down, there was no wrestling to get to 3%, so thank you. On the matter of item seven B, there's a variety of items here that talk about, report discovery of the following situation, diversion and so forth, within 24 hours. Why wouldn't that be immediately upon any knowledge of or something to that effect? Mr. Chairman, I'm asking, and then you can go from there.
May I, I'll address that, that perhaps it's something that could have occurred during the evening and maybe the chief of police in Shrewsbury is not available because his shift was off. But as soon as we would know of an issue or an incident, our director of security, who is the former lieutenant colonel of the Massachusetts State Police, is direct every one of our employees that he is to be notified and he will do the notification directly with the local authorities. He has from not only the phone numbers directly to the station, but he always, he does get the cell phone numbers of all the chiefs that, wherever we're at, and so that he can speak to, and he gives them all of his information because if they have any questions, Frank definitely wants to know. I gotta say, you're, you're looking at a very professional individual for years that was at the pinnacle of the Massachusetts State Police, and you've got somebody that you can trust and know that he's gonna get through information to your local authority. I think it's the best way to say it.
And Mr. Chairman, and that's why I'm, I'm just saying, instead of 24 hours, you know, immediately upon becoming aware of it.
Probably was an attorney's, just 20, within 24 hours versus 40.
But some of these are, again, you know, you as a person may come, may go. So I think as we're framing this, we should frame it, we should frame it not with the degree of comfort we've maybe come with you, John, because you're in the community, but more, less person-specific, operator-specific and more something, because we're likely to get a second operator. And if we divert or in some way change dramatically from the way we're doing things here, who knows, the Attorney General could notice it or something along those lines. So I think it should, I think the language should be tightened up to be immediately upon becoming, or whatever you work on, Kevin, but I do think there should be a more emphasis on immediate notification than within 24 hours.
As long as it works with it, it can go towards our standard operating procedures. That is in there that we make immediate notification to Frank Matthews, our director, and he then makes notification to the local authorities. That's in our current standard of operations that we submitted to the state for operating on the dispensary level. Those are separate from the ones that you have at a cultivation facility. So that would work hand in hand.
Mr. Chairman, item nine, term and termination. The term is for five years, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, one thing that isn't clear to me is five years come up, we're not able to come to agreement. What happens? I see notification there that, you know, if, if he goes awry, obviously of the C, the Cannabis Control Commission, he has another issue. But what happens there, Kevin? Maybe I'm just missing it. We may terminate with 10 days' notice, obviously that would, again, this is written, I think, very tightly for the operator we don't know. But what happens if four and a half years from now, John has moved to Arizona, there's a new operator, you know, everybody's paying their bills on time, it's a good operation, but we're simply not able to, to come to fruition of five years. What happens?
May I, Mr. Chairman, may I say something? I have to agree with you, that's one of the questions I have to the CCC, they have not answered me. And it's up to them because they're the ones who put the five-year term limit in it. No one did, the state did, and this commission is still finding their way around. They're the ones at the end of five years are gonna determine, I believe, whether you can certainly re-up, if I can say, an agreement with the local community on the recreational plot. Here in town, we already have one for the medical that is separate, and we are maintaining that, which I've already spoken to the town manager about and the assistant town manager. We're gonna make sure we maintain that separate medical agreement. This is a second agreement that you're gonna get, and this is based on what the CCC has put together. There is nothing right now, Mr. Selectmen, about it having a, you can re-up this in four years, whatever. We're still at the mercy of, we don't know what the CCC says.
So you, are you planting two doors? Medical and recreation?
No, it'll be the same door, that how you, you can co-mingle within the same facility that has been approved by the state. The difference becomes into the actual operations, and that, when I say that, I mean the point of sale. There'll be a separate system for the medical sales and there'll be separate system for the recreational sales, because the recreational sales are gonna incur a 20% sales tax, which also 3% of that sales tax, since you are going in, you're gonna receive back from the town of whatever it is, plus the 3% that we're gonna be paying on an annual fee or, I should say, four times a year to the town of Shrewsbury. The medical is separate because it's non-taxable. So the state is setting up a system called the metrics, and I'm actually going at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning at Worcester State, they're bringing out a program. It just started yesterday in Boston, it's in Worcester tomorrow, it's in Springfield Thursday, and it's about this metrics. And metrics is gonna be the driver of software that's going to divide the sales of the products and how they keep them separate. It's not a physical separation, but it will be a physical separation at the point of sale. That registers. So we hope to, what have is like three registers for medical over here and seven for recreation. And that's how whoever comes in from the state that's going to collect the taxes, like they do the food and beverages, you know, they go to all the places, they will look at those receipts and those books and they'll follow. But those are the books as well, the numbers that I'll be able to submit to the town manager so that he can see, here's your medical sales, X number of dollars, here's our recreational sales, and let's base off the percentages, that 3% from recreation goes right here, but we do have a floor in the medical. There's a minimum that the town's gonna receive once we become operational.
So you'll be paying off two agreements?
Yes, we are.
Good man.
Yep, we are gonna be doing two agreements.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
Which the town manager insisted and we agreed.
So, so I, if I understand what Mr. Kane is saying, I think he raises a, a good point, whether this is, was you, or not, I think it's part and parcel of what you were saying.
You give me a compliment, you're right.
I will, Jim, so don't take, don't let your hat yet, you know, it's a rare moment, but. So, so what happens in, in the scenario, and I don't see the language here, if, I, I see the language around the company, Prime Wellness, okay? What would happen if Mr. Glowick was to not, no longer be associated, but to sell the company to somebody else? Prime Wellness still exists. Is there language or can language be added that says this agreement remains in effect or needs to be renegotiated based on a new? I think perhaps that's, yes, go ahead.
So, I mean, there, there is a provision within the agreement that I'm not sure if it satisfies those type of questions, Article 14, which says that it's binding upon the parties and their successors.
Okay, thank you, I see it, okay, thank you.
But the, but the other thing that I recall in going through these processes is that every entity is, and the, the operators thereof are distinct and vetted and approved by the Cannabis Control Commission. So it's more than an FID number.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you can't just slip people under the FID number and they can continue to operate.
Okay.
There's a, there's a vetting process of the principals and officials of legal corporation.
Every one of our employees, the CCC has added, every one of our employees are going through the vetting process with CSI here in Mansfield, Mass., and all the core information on every one of our employees, including my bookkeeper has to be in it, not only the people that handle the product, but everyone. So you can be assured that everyone has been at least vetted by this state and as well all that information will be available certainly to town manager.
Thank you.
May I go back to my concern from item nine, the term and termination? I think we should reference that parties recognize that this is the longest term currently allowed by law.
I see.
And that parties further recognize they should annually or when appropriate, get together upon the change in law or further guidance provided by CCC and, and figure out an orderly transition to that next phase, or what if we don't agree? I mean, again, just trying to plan for some way of, of dealing with it. Now, maybe the CCC will issue something in the fall and, and we can simply recognize that as an attachment. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. But I think as we start this again, with or without you, with the next operator in mind, we should reference that we know this is the longest term allowed and that we're, we're waiting for further guidance from the CCC.
Can I just ask a question because I'm, I'm confused? What are you, we, we're gonna have a contract for five years.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Well, usually.
Are you, are you saying the CCC might issue something that supersedes that?
No, I, no, what I'm saying is there's uncertainty of what you do. Normally, if you have a five-year lease.
Yeah.
You would, within six months, notify, notify, you know, there'd be some notice provision so you could engage in a furtherance of the extension if parties wanted to. We're as far as we can go under state law.
Right, okay.
So I'm hoping the CCC will give some level of guidance into the future and then we'll know what to do at four years, six months, or whatever hypothetical notification date there might be.
Okay. Any other questions? I have, I have a question, just for clarification. Is the medical, are the medical sales operated by a nonprofit? Is this the same, is Prime Wellness the same company on both sides of the equation?
Yes, it will be, and as the state of Massachusetts did in the end of October of 2017, had sent out to everyone that all the nonprofits could convert into a for-profit status because from, I think January 1st going on, it was all gonna be for-profit. And all the recreational, you're gonna have a lot of, we call them small mom and pops that are gonna try to set up businesses that are all for-profit, and they realized and they said, well, th, this is keeping you hamstrung. And if you wish, you can opt out of the nonprofit status that the medical, all of the medical facilities had agreed to in the RMD status. And as of right now, I believe, I don't know of anybody that's gonna stay in there as a nonprofit, because on the recreational side, that has become a very profit business. So to your point, it would be two different sets of books for us to handle, accounting-wise, and what's nonprofit, what's for-profit. We've spoken to our accountants and they said, make it easy, let's all get under the one domain, so Prime Wellness Centers is a for-profit entity, we can then be able to handle the books appropriately, and we know exactly who is involved and who owns the business. Because in the nonprofit, no one owns a business. No one has shares of ownership. It's wide open. But now they'll be able to identify this, and since it is going to a for-profit status, we're opting to go that way for accounting purposes as well.
Well, I get, the, the point I was trying to get to is, as a for-profit, right, right now you're a tenant, right?
That's correct.
Okay, if you were a nonprofit and you bought the building, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be subject to real estate tax.
Yes, you would still be, there's an exception to that in the Massachusetts rules.
In this, in this law?
In all of, since day one.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
So it doesn't make any difference, nonprofit or not?
Real estate taxes are to be paid, no matter what you wanna call yourself.
Okay, because in, in other sectors of the economy, they're not.
It's not, exactly, you are correct.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I just ask? So if that does exist, then you would have no problem with my requested language, should you somehow, you were a successor, transition to a nonprofit at some point?
Oh, I don't see us, we're doing the reverse.
No, I know, you are. It's conceivable, you've, you've had enough of this, you moved to Phil, you moved to Phoenix and you sell this thing, and then somebody goes about in a nonprofit. I just want us to be protected as we're protected in another case in town.
I think that it would, well, I shouldn't say, right now, a nonprofit has to pay real estate taxes.
No, I know that. So if you're telling us that in a chapter of law that we don't have in front of us, then you'd probably be comfortable accepting the language that I was talking about earlier.
Yeah, I, if somebody wants to go back to a nonprofit, I, I, you know, something, I, I probably, I don't know the accountability or how the IRS and so forth would look upon it, I don't have an answer, if they can do that.
But forget what they can do. As the guy signing this, would you have a problem agreeing to that type of language to protect us into the future if somebody went that way?
So there would always be a for-profit.
I don't care what they are, he's wanting my taxes.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I understand that.
Yeah.
Yep, sure, sure.
Okay, good.
Going along with that.
I have another question, going back to your, having the, the medical and the recreational. So we'll go, on the medical sales, do you have to key in the, the medical card that someone has when you ring the sale?
Yes, we do. Yes, the person has to show it through the airphone before they even come into the facility. We buzz them in, they come in, our person who is right at the reception takes, takes that card, loads it into the system so that the Department of Health of Massachusetts knows that Bill Jones just came in to us. And it'll show you exactly what Bill Jones has purchased over the last two weeks, or, excuse me, be over the, in, in this state, it's 60 days. New Hampshire, it's every two weeks, in Connecticut, it's every two weeks. But here it would be, and if you saw that they had already purchased 10 ounces in 60 days, sorry, Bill, you can't buy this, you have to wait until this date when your next term comes up.
Yeah, that's not what my concern is. My, my concern is, you've got, you've got two different registers, you've got the retail register and the medical register.
Yes.
Retail's a 20% tax. So, conceivably, somebody might wanna ring it up on the medical because there's no tax on it, but you can't, you can't do that, right?
Correct.
It, you, it, the, the seal is tied into that.
The metric system will pick up that it's a non-medical patient versus a medical patient. You have to load in that number and then it's coded in.
And that's, and that's how you keep them separate.
For medical, otherwise, it's gonna keep coming up, recreation, recreation, 20%, 20%.
Right.
And you don't key in number, names.
Right.
Now, Ron, this is very unusual, all your recreational purchases, we don't have to know, all we have to do is see a driver's license, a passport, something that shows that you're 21 years of age or older, but we don't put you in as Kathy Smith, come in and came in here to recreationally. There is none. There is none of that. It's only on the medical patients that they get loaded into the system. We have to make sure they're twenty-one and older, no different than, I think, somebody who is a, uh, at a liquor establishment, wants to see the card and that's what it is. Now, we haven't had problems, uh, as I can relate to, in Connecticut, we've been open three, three years, three and three-quarter years. And we now have over fifty-four hundred patients there, just to give you a little history. And in New Hampshire, we've been open for one year, one and three-quarters years. And we have a little over twenty-three hundred patients there. We've never had a diversion issue and everything's been medical and it's all medical oriented. But, uh, you know, I think we have a, a, a good handle as to how this happens and how people come in and, and what goes on. And there has been no issues whatsoever with the police in-town, security, or anything of that issue. So, just to let you know. The security system over here is about fifty-eight thousand dollars that we're putting in. And anybody that will recognize, it's a very, very safe and secure system. We've already taken care of a new roof on that building, I don't own it, I'm just a tenant. I've set up the downstairs with the smoke alarms, the fire alarm, because it wasn't in the building. We've done all that as well. We're making the necessary arrangements to make sure that it complies with everything that I think the town wants at this point in time. We've used a local landscaper that's already landscaped over there somewhere. Also, we're gonna use that local snowplow, both Shrewsbury residents, people from Shrewsbury, they're gonna be doing that. And we'll be asphalting as you asked me three years ago to do, or two and a half years ago, to make sure we do. And we're in the presence of using a local civil engineer, Mr. Grenier, to work through planning and development and show the site plan to the town as to what we're doing there. So we were, I think we're trying to comply with as much as we can as the town has requested. And we do have issues where I can't use the local bank, which I pointed out to the town manager. You know, I'd love to use them, I'd love to use, you know, some local insurance companies. No one carries insurance for the medical marijuana liability, I have to go out to the west. So there's some things on vendors that I can't do. But if there's an event that we run, a party, you know, certainly Lakeside and Nappalese, I mean, the local people will utilize. I can say that right now, I'm purchasing almost two hundred thousand dollars a year from HTG, which is right here on Route nine, uh, they're right across from the car wash. And that's presently for my New Hampshire facility. And I'm gonna probably somewhere be in the neighborhood of five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars a year with them for our Sterling facility, 'cause they're, to buy product from them. And I use the local Staples right across the street. And we're gonna, we'll be spending probably sixty, seventy thousand a year at Staples. So, to give you a flavor for the locals, you know, we try to use what we can. And certainly, I, I have more aspirations to hire local people if they're willing to come in and work. And that's something that the town manager was very insistent upon, I, I have to say, through all of our negotiations. And I will try to comply with that to make sure there's people that we can have local to come in and be there, you know, to handle things.
Who is HTG?
Uh, they're, they're Hydroponics and they have the, the grow stuff there. They're right next to the Indian Market, across from, uh, Buffalo Wings.
On Route nine.
Right on Route nine.
They're, that's a locally owned company?
Oh, it's a national concern.
Oh, okay, so it's not really...
It's a, it's a national concern, but I, it's, to me, it's local, it's Shrewsbury. And we give them checks and Jason, we're excellent customers.
Okay. Ms. Miller, do you have a question?
I do. So I, so I just, as we're talking about the medical versus the retail, I just wanna be clear. So, um, we have previously negotiated, um, a, an agreement for the medical. Does this agreement in front of us right now apply to retail only? Does the medical still exist?
Retail only.
Or does this, okay, so we still have two agreements, separate agreements?
Correct.
Okay, all right, okay. So all the more, it was important to have that discussion about how they are separated and, um, and how, how they will apply.
We will have both, and that's why I wanted to tell you the, the accounting, that we're gonna have two separate.
That's good, thank you.
Accounting ledgers that the accountant's gonna do. We have to do it for the CCC in the state. I have to do it for the town to make sure that the town manager gets that and he can see exactly, if we did two million in sales in medical and we did six million in recreation, he knows exactly, you know, what our payments are and should be to the town.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Just one final question on section, uh, excuse me. Five E financial records. In your other operations in Connecticut and New Hampshire, have you been audited by those governing agencies?
Uh, no, all we've done is sent, at the end of the year to, uh, in Connecticut, to the same type of Department of Health there. And as the DHHS up in New Hampshire, it goes to, in New Hampshire, goes to the Charitable Trust Division of the state of New Hampshire. And we send them our tax return. You just wanna say, that goes to them once a year. They have it for review so they can see exactly the revenues that came in and so forth. That's all, so it's really not an audit, it's, we, we are required to send in that to them. I have no problem giving that to the town manager at the end of a given year. Here's the tax, you wanna see the tax return, but here it is, and Prime Wellness Center, he can have a copy of it.
Five E one, minuet, I can't even read it, minuet one, uh, speaks annually that the company shall submit financial records to the town with a certification of gross sales, et cetera, et cetera. Is that common to your other host communities and states?
Uh, the other two states don't have community agreements. These are for the Department of Health in both those states. Asking for it, and CCC is asking for it. So I'm gonna give, when I give CCC, the town manager asked me to give him the same. So he's getting the same information.
Yep.
And we can, you can mirror it off.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, we have some language we gotta fix? Or, do you, do we, any, we wanna see the language that you read?
I would like to see it, yeah.
Before the manager signs it?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure, we're gonna do.
People make good faces.
We're gonna put this on the agenda for the next meeting, then.
Great, wonderful.
All right, get the language right, Mr. Glowick? We'll be ready to go.
Sure.
Okay, yes, one last question. You gonna open the medical soon?
I can tell you exactly where I am today after speaking to the Department of Health in Massachusetts. Yesterday, form, they forwarded all of our information that they have done over the last three and a half weeks, coming in Sterling, up to the, uh, their boss, the head of the division. And they said it'll take about seven days for that person to review it, come back and give us what they are asking for as an approval to start growing in Sterling. Once we can get that, we're looking at now, probably, I will say, end of September to the first of October, of actually opening up the Shrewsbury location, the Worcester location and Lemons location. We have three here in the state for medical purposes. The recreation is all on hold, as you've been reading. I don't, I don't think you're gonna see that until the fall, if not even January first. There's a lot of rumblings with that going on. You're not gonna see it coming July first. There's no retailers that have been approved whatsoever. We are as far down the line as anybody else. All I need is this little host agreement signed by the town manager so that I can say, "We have finalized everything else in our packet, we've done it all." I've done all the public hearings that I was required to here in Shrewsbury, the public notice that was done. Uh, April seventh, we did the, the, April fourteenth, we had the open public meeting where people could attend and ask us questions. And everything else has been done. I have my certificates, which I, hopefully you got a copy of and so that you know we're good standing on all three of our, the businesses, Prime Wellness, we've done everything. And it's a matter of this one little piece of paper coming from the town of Shrewsbury now.
That's for the recreational?
Yes, strictly recreational. Medical, we're fine.
Okay.
Yep, we're, we're fine, Mr. Chairman, but, and that's all I need, is for this to be ratified by this, uh, this group. Allow them to sign it, and then I can forward this in and we can be officially completed with our application. And then it's up to them looking at it and approving, which I think will come fairly quickly. But I don't think they're gonna allow retailers to open up sooner than October, right now. So I, it's, a lot of the delay is unfortunately with the state.
Okay, so, Phil, can you put this on for the next meeting? We should be able to get those things addressed. I, I do agree with Mr. Kane about that reporting. Once you find out, you report it, you know. Twenty-four hours, but, all right, you'll work all that out.
Absolutely.
So, see you in two weeks.
That's it, great, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, um, if the chairman is around, so, oh, they are.
Okay, board members, let's move on to item eleven, presentation by Kevin Mizgar, our town manager, and consider action for the reorganization of town departments and the creation of a Department of Public Works. Uh, we've spoke about this at length several times. So I'm not quite sure what the board, what more information the board needs. Why don't we start, Mr. Mizgar, by defining exactly what would occur, briefly, with the action of the, the requested action of the board?
Sure, so through the Town Manager Act, uh, the town manager has the authority to reorganize and consolidate various departments within the town with the approval of the Board of Selectmen. So this evening, uh, we are seeking, uh, your approval for, uh, the creation and establishment of a Department of Public Works, uh, through the consolidation and merger of, um, several existing departments, uh, which will fall under the direction of a single department head, uh, who will be the director of Public Works. So that would, uh, under the umbrella of the Department of Public Works, include the Engineering Division, Highway Division, and Water and Sewer Divisions, um, with a Public Facilities Department lying within the, makes up the current public buildings, um, Parks and Rec, and Cemetery Departments. So, um, it can be as simple as that. Uh, it's a consolidation of, of those like functioning aspects of our current organization under the direction and leadership of a single department head. The purpose, of course, is to, uh, improve the efficiency and effectiveness and enable us to, um, provide services in a, um, better functioning way to the, to the citizens of Shrewsbury. We have thoroughly vetted, uh, both a staff level with the support of consultants throughout the, the past several months, this model. Along with those existing departments, uh, there would be a new, a new division that is created called a Business Management Division within the Department of Public Works that would, um, serve in a leadership role to carry out all the back-office functions, uh, which include administrative and mission, mission support functions like procurement, um, various aspects of, of customer service, um, payroll, um, other financial matter, management matters like the initial development of the budget, uh, the consolidation and prioritization of, um, certain goals, uh, again, which would be under the direction of the DPW Director.
Questions from members of the board, comments, Selectman Kane?
Mr. Chairman, um, could you ask the manager to walk us through the dotted lines and then the two bolded arrows?
Sure.
Now, I understand on the far right, you've got the accountant, the treasurer, collector, and the town clerk. They dotted line to you on a daily organizational basis, but they're appoint, they're, they are appointed by this board.
That is correct.
Okay, so what's with the two dock lines, um, going between two out of those two, the business and management analyst and HR coordinator?
Sure, that's really just identifying, uh, a functional relationship between those two analyst-level positions within the manager's office will provide a close working relationship and direct support and assistance to the town accountant and treasurer collector's office, um, where needed, or, excuse me, when needed.
Is the HR coordinator relationship with treasurer collector because you're setting up an employee and therefore there's deductions and so forth?
Uh, yeah, as it relates to benefits and payroll coordination.
What's the dotted line between assistant town manager and DPW?
So that's a, um, a, a functional relationship and potentially a future hierarchical relationship between those two positions, uh, with the assistant town manager being, uh, charged with leading, mainly the land, the land use, uh, aspects of the organization, which would include planning, um, building and zoning, and economic development. That, uh, of course, requires close coordination and ties with the Department of Public Works to, uh, both, um, lead and react and develop, uh, the infrastructure of the town to be prepared for, uh, the various aspects of land use. Certainly fall chiefly under the direction, uh, on a day-to-day basis of the operations of the Department of Public Works, but those, uh, two positions will have to closely coordinate and work together. And, and that is what that dotted line represents.
So when the snowstorm is coming, who is working on a day-to-day basis focused on operations with the DPW group? The assistant manager or the manager?
Uh, the manager.
Okay. Just one guy's opinion. And also, why is the library, given its significance in the community, way down the bottom of the dotted line?
So, um, it's shown on this a, as a dotted line because there's not, uh, appointing or...
Yeah, because they have the trustees.
Yeah, the hierarchical authority, but it is identifying relationship with community and human services. So we would like, uh, the library to work closely together with the Department of Health, Council on Aging, and Veteran Services, uh, for those health and human services, uh, matters and functions that they per, uh, so skillfully provide to our community. So, um, it's, it's a coordinating relationship there, but no functional or hierarchical relationship because of the trustees.
No, I understand. Uh, as the average person knows, they get bogged down in trustees, appointing authority. I would tell you, as I look at this, that was, one of the things that struck me is it seems to minimize it. Maybe I'm the only person reading it that way, but I understand the functional relationship and the statutory relationship. I think in terms of looking at the picture, the, one of the beneficial things about the Mr. Carney scenario was you knew who, everybody reported to whom, and practically or statutorily. So I think, you might, one guy's opinion, I would look at how that relates back to your office.
Sure, yep, and that...
Even if it's off to the side and there's an asterisk, but given the community's investment in it, how, uh, with great pride that it is held, I, I think it deserves to be someplace other than a dotted line on the lower left. Other than that, I think you've done a great job working through this, presenting it to town meeting. And it's a very thoughtful approach to opportunistic, um, reorganization.
Thank you. Anyone else? Selectman DePaulo?
Um, I just wanna say I'm, I'm fully supportive of this. Um, I think a lot of thought has gone into it. I think it's a good opportunity for the town, I think it's very forward-thinking. I like that, I heard that the employees, um, are supportive of it. That says a lot of positive things to me, so I'm looking forward to moving ahead and, um, hoping that we find some new candidates to come in to fill those positions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, you know, for the record, Doug, I, I totally support this. Again, um, as Mr. DePaulo said, I think the manager's done a great job, um, it's very thoughtful. It, you know, we've noted this before, um, even with all these changes, the impact is, um, the, you know, point eight-five FTEs, so less than one full-time equivalent employee, um, which, you know, is, is, you know, well done. And I think that, um, you know, I'm, I'm personally looking forward. I hope, I know it's changed and it's sometimes tough, but I'm looking forward to now just moving ahead and, and implementing it. Um, I think it's something that we've been thinking about, talking about for some time, and, uh, I think it's well done.
Selectman Gasper?
I just echo everything my colleagues have said, but also, I just think that, um, we've taken a lot of time and the manager has taken a lot of time to bring about these changes. I think everybody who wants to be informed has been informed and included and brought along in the process. And, uh, I think that's the right way to do that when you're bringing about a change after so many decades of things being done one way. Um, I also think that the community won't be surprised because creating a DPW, it brings us in line with communities that are very similar to ours. And I think it also presents an opportunity to really improve the way that we're doing business and what we deliver to the residents. And it seems like Shrewsbury is such a well-run, efficient town, but there are still always places where you can improve. And I think that by, um, reorganizing in this way, we will be able to find some maybe surprising places for improvement.
All I'd like to say, other than I echo what, uh, the rest of the board has said, is that, uh, you saw the opportunity. It's always preferred to do these things without disrupting people's lives. We've got several retirements impending. If we weren't to do this in the very near future, um, it might be quite some time before we were in the same type of situation. Otherwise, a, a, a change could really have a much more dr- of, I shouldn't say much more dramatic, because I don't think it, it would have a dramatic effect on people's, uh, careers and lives. So I, I certainly endorse the, the concept. This is the, I believe this is the time to do this. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Someone care to make a motion to pursue into Section 11 of the Town Manager Act, approve the reorganization of town departments and the creation of a Department of Public Works?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So voted. Excellent. Item 12 would be to review an act on the recommendation from Engineering Police and Highway to install a stop sign at the intersection of Wheelock Street and Boylston Circle.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Those documents will be prepared for the next meeting to sign, to vote to sign the traffic rules and orders, to amend the traffic rules and orders. Item 13, item to review an act to authorize the chair to sign the memorandum of agreement for the Centec Park North site readiness grant. Would either of you care to inform us on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several months ago, I was before this board asking you to sign off on a grant application to apply to Mass Development for their site readiness program for the design and permitting of the north roadway associated with Centec Park North. We were very generously afforded a grant from Mass Development for, in the amount of $302,000 for the design and permitting of that north roadway. Over the past several weeks, myself and town engineer Jeff Howland have been in discussions with Mass Development and the consultant that they have chosen for us, Bowler Engineering, to develop a scope of services that would get us through that work. And we're happy to report that we are in agreement with that scope of service. The final step to move us forward and to actually go through the design permitting is for the Board of Selectmen to sign a memorandum of agreement with Mass Development. And as I presented when we applied for the, the grant, there is a provision that if we realize economic benefit, so if a building is constructed and begins to pay taxes to the town of Shrewsbury, we would be required to pay an amount equal to 15% of that economic benefit until the $302,000 is repaid. If we do not see any economic benefit, this is actually just $302,000 that we've received from Mass Development. And I do recall the board discussing that we don't have anything there now. We don't have much to lose with that 15% payment repayment to the state. So before you this evening are the documents associated with that agreement and request that you go ahead and review that and approve it if you so desire. And then we can move forward with the full project design. I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Selectman Kane?
As a result of the evaluations undertaken on a variety of sites, there was a lot of, a considerable amount of due diligence done on Centec North for a school site. Has all of that been transferred from that project architect to your office?
Yes, and Bowler Engineering, the consultant that we'll be working with, has received that information. It's been taken into account in the scope of services.
So although I see wetland locations, they're not gonna do as much as they perhaps could have? Or do you think they'll evaluate and then adjust?
I think they'll evaluate. They do plan to use the same wetland consultant that the town has used, so they are not duplicating efforts.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, would someone care to make a motion that you vote to authorize me to sign the memorandum of agreement for the Centec Park North site readiness grant?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Item 14, review an act to authorize payment for the town manager local official bond.
Mr. Chairman, just one follow-up if I could?
Of course.
We don't have a boundary survey already done?
We do not.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Back to 14, this is an annual item of business to come before the board. Would someone care to make a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Item 15, review and, review an act to sign the intermunicipal agreement regarding shared animal control services with Westborough and Grafton. Mr. Misigah, you've previously briefed us on this. I actually, at our last meeting, I think you were not prepared to bring this forward. It's in good form now, I take it.
It is in good form and reviewed by council.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the board?
I have one question. So with this agreement, residents aren't really gonna notice that there's any sort of change. It just...
The, the only change a resident may notice is during a weekend we're receiving mutual aid, emergency backup services from the Grafton and Westborough animal control departments. They wouldn't see our animal control officer respond to a scene. They would see a different individual with appropriate dress and marked vehicle doing that response.
Thanks.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, would someone care to make a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Item 16, review an act on the road race request from Christine Salavaratus, LifeStrong Coordinator, to hold the 6th Annual LifeStrong 5K on October 13th, 2018, beginning and ending at the Y MCA Boroughs Family Branch for Valenti Drive-Westboro, utilizing public ways in the town of Shrewsbury. She writes us that she is in the process of reaching out to the police department regarding police presence in the form of details. Perhaps a motion would be, we approve, subject to any conditions imposed by the police department?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion in a second. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Item 17, review an act on the constable reappointment of Justin Walker, 63A Janet Circle, for a one-year term to expire June 30th, 2019. We had his application at the last meeting. It had a small deficiency in it, which has since been corrected.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in second. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, so voted. Item 18, review an act on the special common vigil license for the 23rd Annual Spirit of Shrewsbury, September 28th, 2018 through September 30th, 2018, from 7:30 a.m. to 8 p.m. at the Oak Middle School, Sherwood Middle School, and Senior Center.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So voted. Item 19 is a request... Did I skip? Oh, no, excuse me. Item 19, review an act on the Board of Selectmen responsibilities for the Master Plan Implementation Committee. We have before us tracker and also comments, some from you, Mr. DePaulo, am I correct? Or am I mistaken in that?
Actually, the manager and the manager's office went through these things and put the comments in as far as what we've done so far and what, and what the status of them is. And I reviewed them with him. And I, you know, I think they're accurate as to what we've done so far, where we're heading, and they're ready to go to the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Okay, do we wanna discuss this further or does the board, does the board wanna discuss this further or does the board wanna act?
You've been our rep, right?
I, I, excuse me?
Yes.
You are our rep, right?
Yep.
You're ready, I'm ready.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Yeah. Let's go.
Okay, let's go.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. We now go into correspondence. A letter dated June 7th from Christopher Amadijan, Bay State Roads, 130 Natural Resources Road in Amerist, that we have another Bay State Road Scholar, Chad Moran from the Highway Department. We congratulate him on his achieving this award and will send him a congratulatory letter on behalf of the board. Item 21, a letter from Fire Chief, Northborough Fire Chief David Parenti to Fire, Shrewsbury Fire Chief Jim Vona, recognizing the town for its assistance in a four alarm on Northborough Fire back on June 2nd. It was well-covered in the press. This was a tough situation. That old furniture building went up with a gas station on one side, an auto repair shop on the other. Lot of potential flammables nearby. I believe in the trade, they call that a good stop, Mr. Kane?
It's a fantastic stop.
And we're very happy to hear from the Northborough Chief that Shrewsbury firefighter and mutual aid was extremely helpful in the situation. And perhaps we should send something off to the fire department, also recognizing the board's appreciation for the work they did. Item 22 is a letter dated June 8th from Kevin Cavanagh, Environmental and Construction Management Services of Braintree, regarding 625 Boston Turnpike Residential Fuel Oil. Noted. Item 23 is a letter dated June 11th from Folino Sweep, Metro West Economic Research Center of Framingham, regarding the greater Metro West economic profile. I don't think the actual, was the, was the profile itself wasn't in the drive, I don't think, but the office has that in reviewing it. So there may be some valuable information in there. 24, an email dated June 13th from Charlotte Cutter, Mass Cultural Council, informing the Board of a Power of Culture Meeting in Auburn. Perhaps we could also let the Cultural Council know about this. I'm not sure. It would seem more appropriate that they might wanna attend. But I think this was specifically sent out to, to the selectmen, so perhaps we could send it to the Cultural Council or perhaps we should check first and see if that would be appropriate unless some members of the board decide they'd like to attend.
Well, it's, it's already over as well.
Oh, well, that takes care of that too, doesn't it now? Somebody should have stopped me before...
Do some time traveling.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Item 25 is a letter dated June 15th from the town manager to Thaddeus Greg Gosick, 25 Avon Ave, regarding a water abatement. Noted, done according to policy. Item 26 is an email dated June 20th from the residents of Green Street to Bernie Kale, town planner, regarding site lighting plan at the Columbus Gas Project on Green Street. The Green Street residents appreciate the response that we, the town provided and continues to ask some questions, particularly about the potential for a green slope. So I think the board would like a response to be crafted and a response made.
I think...
Oh, good, I'm way behind things.
We haven't, we haven't seen it in the...
You're catching me.
On the, on the agenda, but there was a response.
Yeah, no, I must've got a little tired as I started in my review when I got to the end of the agenda. And item 27 is an email from Rena Mayberry, 57 Walnut Street, regarding a request for a traffic study on Walnut Street. What's the pleasure of the board on that?
I think we should refer it to the Engineering Police Department, Highway, as we usually do.
And that's a motion?
Sure.
Yep. Second.
So we have a motion in a second. Board members, since I live right on Walnut Street, I don't know if it's conflict, but I'm gonna abstain from this vote. Seeing no further...
I will simply publicly note that I live at Main Circle at Walnut, and because of that, I will vote for this.
All right.
So, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and one abstention. Does anyone else have any business to come before the board? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.